It is six o'clock and I will call the Bellevue City Council study session to order. We have a couple of items on the agenda tonight, but one that we, I did want to note, Deputy Mayor Robinson is not with us tonight. She is, she is out and did request a motion to excuse her from the meeting. So if there is one of you who would make that motion.
Okay, moved and seconded to excuse Councilmember Robinson. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed, the motion carries. So, right, we are up to an update from one of our partners in Bellevue. That is Bellevue College. I was there this weekend for a festival. So, Mr. Miyake, I'll let you get us started.
I'd like to welcome Dr. Weber up to the table and to join us and just very pleased to have him here this evening. He was last year, he was here last year.
Yeah.
Actually giving us an update.
And it was October 1st.
Yeah. And so tonight he is here to talk about some of the ongoing work of what's going on at the college as well as some new developments. And with that, I would just turn over to Dr. Weber if he has a PowerPoint presentation that he has in front of us and leave it to him for the further presentation. Thank you, Dr. Weber.
Sure, sure. Well, I'm just gonna cover over a few things we have going on at the college now and then leave time for your questions and comments and of course interrupt me anywhere along the way if you'd like. I was gonna start by, last year I showed you a picture with, it was actually Lynn Robinson and a few others digging, you know, the ground there, breaking the ground for the Student Success Center. And it looks something like this now, if you've been by there lately. And it's still on target to be done in April. We're very pleased too. And I want to mention that we'll have a big community space in there in the third floor that was intentionally put there so we can collaborate more with community groups and bring them onto campus. So, that's moving along. Another, another new entry to the college, this is the start of my third year, but as I came, we were working on the student housing. And this isn't your mom and dad's dormitory or the ones I might remember, shall we say, but they, the student housing, all those rooms have kitchens and they're nicely furnished and all of it going very well. The first year, last year, we got all the bumps out of that, you know, got through that without any, you know, any great events fortunately, but all moving along. And now, we saw the opportunity, in fact, what somebody on our foundation board mentioned, gosh, there's such a situation with homeless students and anything we could do. So Brad and I talked from time to time, we struck up a conversation about what the possibilities might be. And we talked to the Bellevue School District. And so we have a pilot started. Now, we have three unhoused students. And there was about six that we identified, somewhere between six and 12, but there were three who were interested particularly in going to Bellevue College at this time. And so, those students are in the housing. They actually have bedding and pots and kitchen and all that. Those accoutrements that we kind of think of or take for granted that they, of course, didn't have. Paper towels, all of that. Bellevue Life Spring volunteers provided supplies for those students for the school year, which was great. And so, they're set and launched now. And I will say, and with the help of this partnership with the city of Bellevue, and then we're connecting them to financial aid to pay for their classes. And we're also placing them in what we call the Trio Program, which is a really good support network program. In fact, it has the highest completion rate of any program at the college. So, our hope is they'll move from here to transfer to a university or out into the workforce and not experience homelessness again. That's our goal for them. So, just give you a quick, real quick point on them. One of the students mentioned that she wants to, she decided to go to college only when she found out she had the support for this. She wouldn't be in college, right? And that's probably true of, quite frankly, all three of these students. One wants to study to be an architect, one wants her goal, another, her goal is to do animal assisted therapy with children. She's studying here for that. And another student's interested in studying psychologist because, psychology because she received so much help from counselors and assistants. And she's realized that's very important. So they're all excited, a little nervous, like anyone might be about starting college and all that, kind of on your own. But I think they'll do fine. And I really appreciate the, really, the city working with us, Brad in particular, walking you through that. And I think this could have a great possibility. In fact, I met with Milin Thai, and I know there's some interest in seeing if this pilot project could work well, maybe taking it to the state actually, and have it be a state project. There are other community and technical colleges and of course, universities who have student housing that could be utilized. So, great innovative little project here. So, the other, I was just gonna tell you a couple of quick things that we're doing at the college, just briefly. We always have a emphasis on student success. How can we move up our game in teaching and learning and have students be more successful? And we've been refining that. And now this year, we're launching into a number of initiatives using data. So, we're kind of pulling together data. Faculty are seeing data about their student successes. We're showing them how to bring that data in and use it to improve their success rate with students in their teaching and learning. So, our opening day, just on Thursday of last week, was all about data and student success. But the other, the other piece of our efforts around student success are around equity. Because what happens is while we have a better success rate on average than many colleges, it still isn't as high for some groups as others, for African American and Latino students in particular. So, we're looking at how we can raise up everyone in, all the students in terms of success. And that's gonna be our emphasis for the next three years, really, we've kind of set down to do. I wanted to mention just quickly another thing besides using data for student success and equity. This is going to be a year also where we explore climate justice. A lot of our faculty, particularly our science faculty, of course, very interested in the impact of climate and what it'll mean. You might expect us to do some different seminars and sessions on that. We're actually bringing Leith Sharp from Harvard University to come in. She runs their executive education for leadership and sustainability. And Leith will be speaking next week to kind of kick off this year. And later on, we're bringing in Sarah Turkle, who is become, who started a group for National Women of Color for Climate Justice. She'll be speaking in October. So, we'll have a number of events throughout the year. Because we also want to make the point, and our faculty have been working on that, that you can take these climate issues and bring them into classroom material. And they're, of course, something that students are very interested in because they know that this is about their future. Right? So, we're very happy about this emphasis and moving this forward during the year. Leith will also be speaking at the Bellevue Chamber of Commerce on Monday. Also, some of you who are going to that. And she'll be talking about, her and a group who've interviewed 30 of the CEOs around the world, 30 of the largest companies in the world, and talking about how they're trying to work in, in the various countries around the world with the Sustainable Development Goals and the culture of their corporations. So, it'll be interesting. All right. And then, three other things I just want to quickly mention. One is, we are meeting and in discussions on the Aquatic Center. I wasn't really gonna speak about that except that we had a meeting just last week again. So, we've had some meetings. I'm actually not perhaps as up on this as Dennis Curran, my Vice President for Administrative Services. And unfortunately, he couldn't be here tonight. But we're still working with your staff and the consulting group on that and looking at the possibilities of that project. Another emphasis for us has been workforce housing. And I discovered this myself when I came to the college. I came from an environment where, you know, was in an area, the college district I was at before, in the Chicago area, there was the ability of folks to kind of get to places where they could find housing and still get to work and all of that stuff. It was a little bit easier, much easier than it is here for some of our employees. And so, when we understood that issue and got a lot of feedback from them, we took that to our Board of Trustees, the stories of their struggles, also took them to the legislature also. And so, we're still working on the workforce housing. And I just want to make you aware, we're, we have a couple partnerships going on. One is with King County Housing Authority. And they're gonna be coming onto our campus now and assisting folks who want rentals in the area. And they're still pretty close to market rate, but they're looking at those. And then Landit, you may have heard of. So, Landit is working with the Bellevue School District and a lot of other K-12. We're actually the first college in the country that they've worked with. And so, we've started a partnership with them. And I think we have six employees right now who are working with them to try to get housing. They assist with the down payment for housing. You're probably familiar with them. But, so, we have partnership with them also. So, those are a couple of possibilities. On this map here, you can see a couple stars, which I'm gonna talk about. One is Lake Washington Technical Institute there. So, Dr. Morrison, Amy Morrison and I have been working a little bit on, could we actually do housing? Where we did housing in Issaquah, they did some housing there. Employees might use it. We're also open to any other arrangements, but we're still trying to see what could be, the King County Housing Authority and Landit are good now, but we want to look for some long-term solutions. One of the things we're looking on as a long-term solution is to think about our property here in Issaquah. So, we have 20 acres in the Issaquah Highland. It was purchased to look at a east campus. It's so difficult today to get capital to build with as it is. There's almost, oh, a six to 10-year wait to get funding for a building now through the state. So, we're looking at how we could possibly use that land and what option might be workforce housing. So, we've had a few meetings with Issaquah, the city, and some of their development people, some of the corporations around there also. So, we're still in discussion. And we're kind of, we're putting together some plans. But we may even as early as next spring or the fall after that be letting out maybe an RFP or something, or an RFP or whatever, to look at our options there. So, we'll see how that develops. We're really gonna be in the process now of talking to our employees really carefully about what their interest is. If we did build something, we might use it. And again, we would be open. We couldn't fill up that space with whatever we put in anyway. So, there would be other partners. So, the other thing we're tracking is, like all of you, transportation, right? And here's the line coming through here. So, we did meet with some of, one of your folks and with Metro and all that, just to hear the plans. Our cabinet group met, discussed that. So, we are tracking that. And we are aware that our students, a lot of them need bus or some kind of public transportation access. So, we're keeping that mindful and also looking at how that's gonna impact us. And then finally, I put a Bellevue promise. So, I talked to you a year ago when I came about, maybe we could explore some sort of a promise of free tuition. So, across the country, there's states and counties and cities and regions that have created these promises of free tuition. And what, the state of Washington just expanded though greatly, the financial aid for college. So, we're still looking at what the impact of that would be. There's also the King County Promise, which has just passed too. And so, we're kind of looking at the impact of those. But I'm also interested in perhaps exploring, maybe there's a way, maybe there's also a particular niche that you, as a city, and as a city council, might be interested in. Maybe there's a group that we still look at in our data and somehow we're not accessing them, or they're not coming to college. And maybe there's a way we can incentivize them. I know I talked with Brad a little bit too about the idea, maybe, maybe if you're a merchant here, you'd like to know that if somebody were working here in the city and put in so many hours, they could access some free tuition or something. You know, it might be a way for you to get college students working at your establishment, right? So, with, you know, I'd like to keep the lines open if all of you are amenable to that of talking through and seeing if there's, seeing if there's educational opportunities that are out there that we haven't fully explored, that we want to take advantage of. Well, those are the, the main things that I had wanted to cover. And just, the rest was really just to answer your questions. I think I want to just say thank you to end this. And also, those are our students from the Democratic Republic of the Congo. I was just there two weeks ago. And I actually saw some of these students. So, they were still apparently doing all right, even though when they visited the college in the summer, I'd given them a lecture for an hour. And apparently, they survived it all and still learning and going on as well. But, yeah, it was great to see them. We actually have in Lumumba Bashi, a, there's a Bellevue High School, a complex scolaire Bellevue, that, those are where some of the students are coming from. And they've sort of modeled that school after the curriculum. And we've assisted them with some of that curriculum they're using there. And their students who've come over have done very well. Some of them have become chemical engineers and computer programmers, students doing quite well, which is good because they need those educated citizens really coming back to help build their economy. We have students from other African countries too. In fact, we have a number of students from Kinshasa also, from the DRC also. So, but anyway, thank you. I think Lynn and some others here hosted them in, in the building here. And they really enjoyed that, learning a little bit about the city government and all of that. So, it's good. Thank you. It's just another sign of us working together in partnerships.
Great. Thanks very much. Thanks for the report and everything that Bellevue College does. Mr. Newenhouse, I think you live closest to the college of all of the council members. So, I'm gonna start with you.
Wow.
Time for all of your complaints.
Thank you. I'm gonna mark this day now. Just kidding. Thank you for the presentation.
Sure.
Great, great update. And my first question was, it was a great story that you gave about those homeless students and getting them into housing. I'm just curious, did you identify them or did they self-identify? And how do other students that may be experiencing homeless, but you're not aware, how do we make them aware of the, of the program?
No, I think actually, this idea started a whole process. So, I went to Ivan Duran. He talked with Judy Buckmaster. Judy kind of took this on as a project. Many of you may know her, I think. But she took this on as a project and actually went and interviewed, found those students and interviewed many of them to kind of find out what their issues were and all of that. And then, our intent was always that they would identify these students. So, they're willing to do that in the future, right? And, and then, we would take them, in fact, we even, you know, it may be in the future, we want to start them right out of high school. So, they start right in the summer and we could do an intensive program with them and all that. Being the startup this time, we got everything together by the fall. But, that answer your question?
Yeah, it does. Thank you. Well, it's like you said, if they didn't have this help, they might not even be going to college right now. So, it's just, it's a great story. And I hope we can hear about more stories like that when you give us your next update. The, the question about the free tuition, it got me thinking about the relationship that Starbucks has with ASU. I, I don't know all the particulars of that, but apparently, if you are an employee with Starbucks and you have not received your undergrad education, you do have the ability to go to ASU. I was just wondering if Bellevue College has been exploring a similar type of relationship with other Bellevue or Eastside companies that might be willing to go into a partnership like that with Bellevue College?
Yeah, we're actually in discussions now with, let's just say, a large retailer. It has a lot of places.
A large online retailer?
Nope.
Oh, okay, okay.
And so, actually, we're talking to see if we could kind of do a model of that system there with that employer, who then said we could look at the larger collection of stores, talk to them. But I was also thinking of it just as something for the whole city, as a way to track workers, in a sense. You know, if I knew, you know, almost like the Starbucks model, you know, if I knew I'd work here and I show that, then I can go into this pool of funds.
Right, right. Okay, great. And I just wonder if you could provide us a little bit more color on the comment about using data for student success and equity?
Yeah.
So, can you explore that just a little bit more? What, what kind of data are you using in order to get to those two?
Well, you know, there's a whole set of measures that you could think of as sort of lead measures and lagging measures, maybe be a way to say it. But, those kind of lead measures that are more short-term that you look at. So, does every student have an academic plan? Now, you might think, well, shouldn't they, et cetera? But our students, a lot of them are part-time, a lot of them kind of get in and then they don't take advantage of all the services. So, we have to get a hold of them. So, that's a measure. We want to say, what percentage of students by the first semester, by the end of the first term, winter term, have an academic plan? And how many successfully pass one of the introductory math courses? Well, those are all the smaller measures you look at. Term-to-term retention and then what they call persistence, which is year-to-year retention. So, those are all measures. But they lead up to the larger measure, which is your overall success rate, which is generally the percentage of students who successfully complete a certificate or a degree or program, and then the percentage of those who transfer, right? And then you can go on and on with other additional measures, but those are sort of the... Now, when I'm talking though about a faculty member, they may be very interested in just looking at the course success rates. You can imagine, so our history faculty got up before the group and said, you know, we're history geeks, not data geeks, but I want to tell you. And they showed how they were using the data to improve the completion rate in their online sections. Because their, you know, their class sections had a very high completion rate, but the online was much lower, 20 or 30% lower. And so, they showed how, over time, instituting different changes, they kept moving those numbers up. So, they're pretty close to each other.
Interesting. Okay.
So, that's the kind of, that's the kind of information we want to keep sharing with them so they can keep iterating these improvements.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Great. Since he is the closest to college age, I'll call on Councilmember Lee next.
I am, I am. I'm still learning. Yeah, I'm still, oh, thank you. I'm still learning. Thank you, man. Thank you, Dr. Weber, for coming to talk to us. You know, I don't know whether you know, but Bellevue College, used to be a community college, has always been the most innovative college around here. And I remember 30 years ago, they started the first women's center and really helped a woman, for whatever reason, circumstance, they need a lot of help, especially women with families and kids. And the lady who worked at Sutapa Passu, she has since went, gone on to University of Washington. And I think it's direct of their women's center. And this is just one example of what Bellevue College has been stalwart in, you know, having programs to fill the voids where, you know, traditional universities and colleges doesn't fill. And so, you went through the evolution of working in getting science and technology, you know, I mean, that's why Bellevue College has such a wonderful science program, you know, with private partners like Microsoft and all that, so on. And they, obviously, we know they're such a global population community, people from all over the world. And, and lots of kids, you know, were able to find the opportunities that they cannot through a traditional university college. So, I want to thank the college. And you seem to following this. So, I'm not surprised with all the programs you're talking about. It's a big challenge, a year full, you know? And especially in the challenge of today, I was talking to the Seattle College Chancellor that because of the economy and the pressure on community colleges are pretty big. I think for a first time, many colleges are seeing enrollment drop. And so, I don't know whether, number one, it's the case with Bellevue College. So, that's...
Well, it's an interesting phenomenon with the enrollment. So, if you look at the last seven years, we've had a total decline of 1.6%. But, if you look at what you might conclude are, I guess you could call it the usual community college students, you take out international students, you take out running start students, and you take out the new bachelors in applied science students. So, we take all of those out, there's actually been about a 19% drop over seven years. Now, you gotta remember, before that seven years, there was a huge boost, right? Because all of a sudden, 20%. So, you really kind of just come back to where you were, in a sense, a long time ago. But, the, you know, I showed that data and mentioned to the college that that's all gonna be part of a strategic review. I didn't say that before. One of the things we're focusing on this year is, we're calling it a strategic review. So, we're looking at what they call a strategic enrollment management plan. We're tuning up those measures I talked about a little bit, kind of reviewing those again. We're also looking at our strategic plan and our facilities in a number of areas and kind of pulling all that information together. So, yeah, we're always, we're always sort of looking at that. I should, I should say too, let me come back to your statement about innovation a little bit too. Because as part of that, we're now starting to a artificial intelligence and robotics curriculum this year. So, that should be very interesting. But, yeah, so then enrollment, let me, let me pause back to that a second. That sounds to me horrendous to say 19% drop in those students. If you're a faculty in the classroom, you hardly notice the difference over seven years, right? That is just, the population has changed somewhat, right? But, still, I want to explore, are there some of those? And that comes back to that idea of a promise or some, are some of those students not coming because they think they can't afford it? Or are they just not coming because the market is so hot for jobs? Have they shifted? So, those are some of the questions we're going to try to answer over the next six months and get a better sense of that in looking in. And I will say, actually, we've done the best of all the community and technical colleges in the state of Washington. So, all of them have had similar or greater decline than us. So, it's, and it's actually a national phenomenon that's going on, yeah.
Yeah. I want to compliment you for, you know, having the challenge of reading the basic statistics. But you are coming up with programs that's very, very necessary in terms of social area. You talk about equity, you talk about housing, you talk about homelessness. I mean, these are, again, the new frontier that you're attacking, which most universities colleges probably would not touch. So, I want to, again, compliment you on this. The question is about this one specific, the Issaquah Mammoth Plateau Highlands.
Highlands.
Are you doing that for, for, for what purpose? It's a, it's additional economic development to help your financial situation?
Yeah, that's a, well, that would be wonderful.
It's kind of very non-traditional. Actually, the way I was using is, the programs you have are very non-traditional, which I compliment. But this is something that kind of led me figuring what this, you can maybe explain.
Well, yeah. And in fact, what we'd be hoping for would be to have some institutional space on that land, not a whole east campus. But maybe there would be, we're looking at perhaps an early learning center there. We have one at the college, maybe put another one there. We're looking at maybe having some additional rooms that could be there where we could bring programs. They might even be graduate programs from other schools, but, you know, some of our programming there. So, not a lot of space, but just a little bit there. And then, maybe the rest for housing. And hopefully, that housing could help pay for those other things. So, you know, in terms of the, what we could work out as an arrangement. So, yeah, unfortunately, we're prohibited in many ways from making a profit. Otherwise, that would probably be a good deal to help us our budget out. But, yeah, but we are looking at...
Or as a technology incubator center or something.
Yeah. Yeah, we're actually looking at a technology incubator center on our campus. Yeah. Yeah, we're actually looking at a technology incubator center on our campus right now, too. So, we're just, yeah, we're just in discussions with a couple of different groups, and we're looking at that.
Thank you. Great. Councilmember Zahn?
Yeah. So, I was, I'm excited to hear about the work that you're doing, too. I was trying to remember, when you came last year, I think you were talking about a Bellevue College master plan?
Yeah.
Too. So, I know you talked about a strategic review. Is the master plan part done? And then the strategic reviews, or the strategic reviews will build up to the master plan?
Yeah, I'll tell you, you reminded me of something I could have mentioned that relates to all that. But, so, we did complete a master plan, but it's that traditional master plan that shows where you'd site buildings and all that, which we're never going to build today, you know, in the climate for capital and all of that. So, what we're going to do now is, we're calling the Facilities Excellence Plan. So, it's going to take that master plan, but really, it'll focus more on, how do we make sure that all our facilities are first-class? When you, if you've been in any of our new buildings, and I hope you'll all come for the opening of the Student Center and see that building, they're just amazing facilities. But then, we got that stuff that was built maybe forty-five years ago or something like that. And that stuff's showing its age. So, how do we, how do we, with the limited mechanisms we have, figure a way to get excellent facilities? So, that may have been what I was referring to. Another thing we're working on last year, I probably mentioned, was BC Futures, which was a kind of look at, and we, it was led by a couple of our trustees, probably you know Ross Hunter and Steve Miller, and then a lot of community folks. We had a couple professors from UW and some other hospital consultant representative, and just a nice broad-range group of faculty members, myself and current trustee. So, we had a good group there. We looked at all sorts of data, and we wanted to answer the question, could Bellevue College be a separate, standalone, four-year institution on the east side? And the answer we came up with was, of course, we could do it, but it doesn't look like we could afford it in the next near future. So, it's something we've just put to rest for now, unless something should inevitably change. But the calculations that we went through showed you'd have to almost double your operating budget, and that's not really feasible today. And that doesn't even count all the capital you would need in facilities and all that. So, we've kind of set that aside. That was called BC Futures. However, in doing that report, it did show up some very interesting areas that we need to look at, and some data that we can dive into in programs that we're going to be looking at, and seeing if there's, either if we can add to our BAS programs, our Bachelors of Applied Science, or if we can, through a partnership with the university, bring those to these areas here to expand bachelor degree opportunity, that came up. The other issue that came up, which I know you're all hearing about, and it's kind of an interesting piece, is this whole idea of the impact of artificial intelligence and robotics on the coming workforce. And so, then the question is, how do we prepare our students in this new coming age, right? So, we're calling that 21st century skills, and we're going to explore that a little bit, too, this year, and probably much more next year. What are the actual skills that somebody needs today? And, you know, there's already some thoughts out there and some research out there. You know, you want to get away from procedural memorization sort of learning, and more to critical thinking, and what we think of as the, the arts curriculum in a way.
Yeah. Well, I'm really glad you're doing that, because I think our former council member is actually on the State Committee looking at the future work. And so, you know, really teaching our kids for that. So, I am really glad to hear that you're doing the partnerships around homeless students. Hopefully, that is a pilot that can expand. Because what I think about with Running Start students is perhaps some of those students could actually be housed as well while they're going through Running Start, instead of waiting until they are, they have two years of that potentially unhoused situation before they're able to do that.
Yeah, and they have to be seventeen.
Oh, okay.
That's it. But, you know, they could be juniors, be seventeen.
Yeah. And take a look at that, because it's mostly a community campus, too. So, I'm glad to see that you're working on transportation and housing. And then the equity and social justice. So, to me, those are huge pieces. I'm curious, when you look at the population of students, how many are first-generation college students?
Oh.
Do you track that?
You know, that's a great...
Because it seems like that would be a place where we can look at.
Yeah, that's a big issue. Sure, sure. That's a big, you know, I should know that data. I've asked about it, and I don't, I think there's an issue with how we collect that, but I'll check again. But, generally, at a community and technical college, almost half of the students are first generation or more. But...
Because it seems like that might be a place where having that knowledge means that you have a better sense for what kind of information that they may not know, that students for, with parents that have gone to college would already know. And then, I know that for a couple of years, I was engaged with some nourishing networks, hunger in the college. And so, hopefully, that's another area that could be expanded from the give-one-take-one pantry to maybe a broader support for students. So, because to me, the whole starving college student should just go away, because actually, every student should have adequate food to learn, instead of this notion that college students are starving.
So, we're partnering, too, with the benefits hub, the United Way Benefits Hub. So, we had them there for opening day, talking about our faculty, how they could utilize them, partly over issues of a food. And we have a small food pantry, but we're going, we're finding a location to expand that also. But we're also looking at how we could do something in the future. So, we're also looking at maybe getting, you know, as we get these IDs, student IDs, putting it, you know, something on them, so we could load it with food benefits if they get a, you know, all that sort of thing. So, we're looking at ways that we could functionally help out with that issue also of food insecurity. And we intend to, this year, focus on student success and equity, but next year, start diving into equity, making that the center. And along with equity does come these issues, first-generation issues that, like you're talking about, and food insecurity and other issues. So, we do intend to work on that. You know, with first-generation students, I'll say one more thing, is we're on a, we're on a journey also to be a guided pathway institution, which is a way you restructure your college. So, there, everything's put into what they call meta majors, but it's easier for the student to find their way. And we'll get additional funding next year through the bill that was passed. Thank goodness. The bill that was passed, that'll give us more funding for guided pathways.
Thank you.
Mr. Stokes?
Yeah, I have several things to talk about. One of them I would like to expand on quite a bit. It's the Aquatic Center, but I'll let my colleague Jennifer Robertson talk about that one, because that's something we both share a passion for, and she's very first in that. But we're very hopeful with that, looking for it. I think, you know, the things you're talking about, it's been a lot said by everybody else. I don't want to go over that same ground, because they're very, very good questions and comments. The workforce, housing, student housing, and education, making it sustainable, and also is something that, I mean, just has benefits that ripple so far past those, in terms of keeping people in school, if you're talking about the students, but also, I like the idea with, and heard about the one in Isicua. I didn't realize you were talking to Redmond and Lake Washington Technical College, which is also a great connection, because that's a really amazing institution itself. So, there's a lot of partnership, I think, opportunities there. But, again, that's a, that's a big problem we have in Bellevue, is the whole workforce sustainability, in a sense. How do you, it's just tough. So, workforce housing is a good thing to be working on, and hopefully, help you on that. And, again, with students. And the innovation piece, I'm glad that came up, you know, the 21st century skills and all is something very important to us. And we, that's one of the big things we do. We have more and more, this is a technology city, and a city that really is with innovation, and all the big companies coming here should help with that whole concept and help you. And I would think, along the way, there are a lot of opportunities to connect with these companies and, you know, work more on that. And it's something with their own workforce, we find, the housing is difficult. So, you're taking on some really important, people used to say, cutting-edge, it's kind of a weird term, but I think you're really out there for a school, particularly of your size, and for a community college. I think you're more than a community college. It's not quite the, that, but it's just amazing. But, I'm glad to see that. On the housing part, I wanted, started to mention at the beginning, but I still have my blue hat, hard hat from that, that day, when we dug the holes out there and all, you know, kind of the fake holes, and had the groundbreaking. It's so fantastic to see it happen. So, that's really great. Last thing I wanted to say was on the equity. And again, that's an extremely important issue, and one that, a lot of conversations on that, a lot of people look at it in different ways. And I appreciate the way you've approached it in terms of how, why that's important, how that is beneficial, and why it's something we need to do, we have to do. And frankly, equity is a, it's a driver, it's a facilitator for higher student success and for the community. It's a community benefit. I mean, the more kids we can get educated and out there in the workforce, out there and living in the city, in the area, who are highly educated, as you said, and I'm glad to hear people still thinking that having highly educated citizens to read is an important thing, which I think we all agree with. So, that's fantastic. You're really taking that on, and in a forceful way. So, it sounds like you have, which is always good at a school, to have a well-rounded curriculum of activities and things you're working on. And we're really looking forward to continue to work with you. And again, I'll put that last plug in for the Aquatic Center and turn it over to Jennifer.
Councilmember Robert.
I might come up and just one thing, Councilman Stokes, that you talked about workforce, and what we've done around the workforce, besides our credit curriculum, I mean, we have like the Amazon Academy and the curriculum, and, you know, other areas, technology in there, game, you know, game design, all that sort of thing you might imagine. But we've also taken on our non-credit site, our continuing education. We've restructured that and created a unit, we're calling it BC Enterprises, but actually, next month, we're going to brand it and bring that out. And that's just to really focus in on the needs of the tech companies and those fast-changing needs. And then, the idea would be, these, these will be the folks who go out, find out what kind of training someone needs, as they do. And then, in some cases, some of that will convert over, over time, to maybe the credit area, but at least find out and keep up with those rapid changes and present the programs that are needed. So...
Great. Thank you. Great. Councilmember Robertson?
Thank you. Guys are doing so many wonderful new programs. It is just really exciting. I just wanted to make a couple of comments. On the food issue and the housing for students, especially students who may be homeless or at risk, one of the things that is really important to consider is how the students that are living on campus get food, and whether your, if you're, if you have a cafeteria, if that's closed over breaks. Because there are students that won't have another place to go or another place to get food. So, I hope that, as you're building this new system, that you'll consider that. You know, it's just, I've been on the council ten years, and I don't think the partnership between Bellevue College and the city has ever been stronger. It's always been good. We value Bellevue College. We're very proud to have you in our community, and to see how you're growing, and you're providing all these great services to people, whether they grew up in Bellevue or they're coming from elsewhere. And so, I just want to give you accolades for that. As a parent who paid less college tuition because of, you know, some of those CTE classes, or whatever that they get credit for, it's great. I mean, it's, what a great partnership between Bellevue School District and with the city. You know, I'm seeing, it seems to me that a lot of the work you're doing with the STEM and stuff is providing a great service to the economy and the businesses here. And I'm also reflecting on how the college is really, it's becoming more of a third place. It is a commuter school, but it's really becoming much more of a hub of the community for some of the youth, young adults in our community. So, I'm really grateful for that. And someone who used to go, do the parent-talk classes, it was a great third place for that program as well. So, just really, just really great accolades. Happy to hear it. So happy you're coming to present to us. On the Aquatic Center, Councilmember Stokes, I wasn't going to say that much, because I know you're not here for that tonight. That's coming back to council in October. But, really appreciate the partnership. I really think we're going to be able to do something wonderful for your students and for the whole regional community with that partnership. So, it has very strong support here and in City Hall and all around the region. So, thank you for your work on that.
Yeah, if we end up being the best place, that would be great. If we're not, we'll understand that. You know, you need to have a number-one facility, whether it's at Bellevue College or some other location. But we're happy to do that full exploration.
Very grateful, and thank you. Thank your staff that's been working on that as well.
Yeah, I will. I mentioned, when, come back to the food, I will mention that. At the student housing, we do have food in there, kind of limited food, but it's great. I order a pizza there on my way home a lot of times and pick it up. It's very good, custom-made. And we'll be, we've been expanding what we do for food service anyway. We actually bring food trucks on once a month now, just for a little variety of the campus. And we're trying some different things.
What are you saying?
I'll let you know. Although, I'll be glad, too. I mean, if there's any college events you're interested in, in fact, next Tuesday night, we have a little conference, and you can let me know or let Brad know if you're interested. We're going to have a little reception at the student housing on the second floor, so if any of you'd like to come. And we're going to have a group from, called the Post-Secondary International Network, with about fifteen presidents from colleges around Australia, South Korea, Canada, other US. And they're mostly in polytechnics, sort of, which, coming back to John's comment, we're a little bit, we're not quite a two-year school, and we're not a separate four-year school. We're something a little bit in between now with these bachelor degrees and these others. It's almost like, a little bit like a polytechnic, yeah.
Well, good. Thank you for being here. I do have a couple of quick things we should probably touch base on. The idea of being able to get people benefits through a card or ID. Actually, I picked up an idea on that from Conference of Mayors. So, I would have to dig back through my emails and share that with you. Mayor may not be the right thing, but it might, might be a good way. And also, maybe we can connect up here on the affordable housing front. Couple of things to chat about with you on that. So...
You know, I didn't, I should have given, I'll just pass these cards around, too. I should have done that before we got started, but happy to do that. Yeah.
And again, just from having been working on it for a while, the partnership that's blossoming with the school district, being able to deal with students who are unhoused, get them housing, get them education, and get them a better life is just really a fabulous thing. So, would really appreciate that. And Brad, appreciate you working with Dr. Weber on that, and...
It's a pleasure working with you.
Yeah. And I have to echo, now, I've got six years on Jennifer, but, so, it's sixteen. But I really do think the partnership is the strongest it's been in that time period, and we really appreciate it.
We'll keep making it stronger and better. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. We have one more item on the agenda for tonight, and the potential, I think, exists that we might be able to do a couple of items from the main meeting, depending on how long we go here. So, this is going to be a discussion on extending the multifamily tax exemption program. And Mr. Miyaki, I'll let you...
I'll just do a quick background here, just as a reminder. The council adopted the multifamily tax exemption on June 15th of 2015, so, four years ago. And then amended the program on February of 2018 to increase developer participation. The multifamily tax exemption program is set to expire based on the sunset provision this December, the end of this year, December 31st of 2019, unless the council takes some action. That's why we're here early, to talk to the council about the program. And tonight, we are looking for, if the council is ready, some direction on whether to bring this back at a future council meeting, to either continue it, put in the sunset clause, or with the Stafford Act... recommendation is to take the expiration date off. So this evening, we're joined by Matt Cummins, the Director of our Community Development Department, as well as Janet Lewin, our Senior Planner. And I'll go ahead and turn it over to you, Matt.
Thank you, City Manager Miyaki. Good evening, council. We're here this evening to talk about keeping the M F T E program in place going forward. And I think City Manager Miyaki did a good job explaining sort of what you're going to be asked tonight. I thought as we introduced this topic, we might just put it in context. You may recall that some time ago, maybe six, eight months ago, there was a request on the status of the Affordable Housing Program in general, and which programs were creating which types of units. And at that time, we indicated that the M F T E program is strong, that even though it's in its infancy, we're getting a lot of interest and requests for information and so forth. And so we've had a couple of projects that are actually taking part with the M F T E program, and the developers are giving us positive feedback that the tax incentive structure works for them as they look at how to create affordable housing units. So it's our recommendation that the council consider removing the sunset clause that you put in place, as City Manager Miyaki said, four years ago. And we're happy to talk about any policy implications with that. And Ms. Lewin would like to make a few comments about the status of the program and a few of the buildings that are taking advantage of that program right now. And then I'll be happy to talk about any large policy things if you'd all like.
Okay. And, you know, as you recall, the M F T E program was adopted in 2015 as a voluntary affordable housing incentive for new apartment development. And developers can receive a 12-year exemption from the housing portion of property taxes in exchange for 20% affordable units. That's how the basic program works. As, just to reiterate a comment from Mac, that we are returning to council twice a year with updates on the Affordable Housing Strategy, where we do address the multifamily tax exemption program, how many units we're getting, where they're landing and such. And we feel that those updates can achieve the purpose of that five-year review that we put in initially. And in fact, that five-year review was a trial period, so that we had a chance to look at the impacts and see if there was anything that the program was, was performing as expected. And I guess I would say the only thing that was unexpected was it started slow, but right now, we are building a lot of developer interest, and we really would want to see the program continued without interruption. I think that's about it. We're just asking tonight for direction to extend the program. And just one comment regarding scope, we will be coming back to council next year to open up this program to look at other issues. We look probably about the time we're doing land use code amendments for East Main because of the interest perhaps in adding a boundary for M F T E at, at East Main. We might be looking at the boundary for Wilburton, because I don't believe it corresponds exactly with what we ended up with at the end of the C A C recommendation for Wilburton. And we might be looking at expanding the M F T E in other parts of the city. There's also some regulatory issues that we might want to take another look at as well at that time. That's not now. Now we just want to keep the program going.
Okay. It's the questions. Any, okay, I'll go with council members on, followed by Councilmember Newen House.
Yeah. Well, thank you. So what we're voting on tonight is to have staff come back with a recommendation to extend without the five-year sunset. Is that right? So I noticed in the packet, it talks about how there was one apartment that came online in 2019, and then one that's coming online in 2020. How many affordable units did we actually get with the one that started this year?
There were 30 in one of the contracted projects and 33 in the other. Anyway, we're up, we're up to 63 affordable units created by this program.
Okay.
And both buildings are located in downtown.
Yeah.
Oh, that's great.
It is nice. I mean, the whole point of this program, they're integrated into new apartment buildings in downtown or where we've identified the areas.
And you said that there are additional developer interests. So how many are actually in the pipeline where there's a permit in where they want to take it in?
We don't have any contracts right now. We are talking to developers who are in pre-development.
I see. Okay.
And there's four that I'm aware of.
Okay. And then when you talked about regulatory, I know that as part of the Association of Washington City Legislative Committee, this was actually one of the items that was on the legislative agenda for A W C, which is to actually look at advocating to extend the tax exemption for longer than 12 years.
Right.
There was also a discussion about expanding it for preserving existing affordable housing. And so when you talk about regulatory, are the, are there things that the city can do separately than the state, or are we actually talking about advocating at the state level for similar things as A W C?
Advocating at the state level. A lot of the income tax, or property tax that's exempted is the state's property tax. So this is something that the state legislature passed that cities can voluntarily adopt or not adopt. I'm assuming that the two amendments that you're speaking to, this week would bring back and have council choose whether we wanted to adopt those if the state made them available.
Okay. But probably, it was, it is not part of what you're talking about of, of our policy right now?
Not, no.
That would be a follow-on discussion?
It would follow on the state's, next year's state new, new font or bills if that was passed.
And is there any downside to getting rid of the sunset provision so that it doesn't expire?
Not, not from our perspective. We think this is a really good program. If you look at the total amount of tax revenue that might not be collected as a result of someone taking advantage of this program, the amount of units that are getting created makes the amount of dollars per unit very, very low compared to if we tried to cash fund or subsidize the creation of new units.
Okay. And there's already, it looks like something built in about the oversight of these units. And so all of those pieces are in here where, on a five-year basis, it seems like there's not really a benefit to reopening this discussion.
Right. The, there's a monitoring piece to it, that the developer turns in paperwork every year, and we monitor it here at the city.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Newen.
Thank you, Mac. Janet, thank you for the presentation. In general, favor extending this indefinitely. Just want to make sure, this does not prevent us from making any tweaks to this program in the future if we start getting some, either, I don't know, issues or ways we can tweak it to further incentivize and stronger. This wouldn't prevent us from doing that, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Just want to make sure. And we have so far created 63 total units as this program has been in place.
Affordable units, yes.
Affordable units, correct. Was there a goal that was established that we were actually trying to hit, or was, was there not? I'm just trying to gauge if, if 63 is, certainly that's great, affordable units, but I'm just wondering if there was a certain goal that we were trying to hit when we launched this program originally?
I think that we were thinking, that a larger percentage of the multifamily apartments would take advantage. In five years, only getting two people, or two developers take advantage, that's where we were disappointed. We thought we would see a couple each year.
Each year. Okay, okay.
And if we get four next year, then we've got some catching up.
Well, that's, I mean, I think this is a great program. Just curious if we need, if there's ways that we can further incentivize or need to do that or look at that again. Because certainly, you know, with the, with the rate of our economy and affordable housing is our premium. So I'm always looking the way we can increase that. And then lastly, if I can find my question here. So this is for new developments only, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
There was, one of the legislation proposals that Councilmembers on mentioned might allow existing proposals.
Okay.
Or existing developments.
Gotcha. And then my last question was in regard to, in our packet B here, there was a small provision regarding required parking spaces. So the rental cost includes rent utilities, one required parking space, and other required charges. I'm just curious if that is standard, to have that required parking space or amongst other affordable housing guidelines? Or was that just for this program? I just wanted to get your take on that.
I think I can, I can answer that question. So Councilmember Newen House is referring to this handout that sort of walks through how to apply for M F T E. There's a subnote on the very back page, on the bottom, that articulates that housing and what goes into the cost of housing is not just monthly rent. It's utilities and a host of other things to have someone actually be able to live. So parking and the provision of parking is actually administered through the city's land use code. So you work with our Development Services Department. If you enter into an M F T E agreement with the city, then we will attach a covenant that runs with the property that defines housing and costs of housing. And there's a host of things that go into that, and they're customized each time.
Oh, each time there, customized. Oh, okay, interesting. Great. Okay, thanks, Matt.
Councilmember Lee.
Thank you. I appreciate this result. And we've have, you know, after two years of demonstration, that this seemed to work well. I always felt that the, you know, the program the city supports, I always support incentive anyway, you know, things that we encourage people to do rather than penalize. And I think this works in the spirit of that. The way to increase affordable housing is to make the costs lower. And I think without charging the taxes, that provides incentive to do it. And the fact that, you know, you mentioned about having the other opportunities when you have the directors to provide some directions in the future, whatever we decide that is more to incentivize. And I think as long as we achieve our goal, that's the key. And without overly burdening our taxpayers because we're losing a lot of revenue, something like it isn't going to be, and you're right now, that we're actually going to generate more taxes because of a newer property, you know, that's going to be coming online. So I think for all those reasons, I think this is a good program that achieves a goal that the city council and the people of Bellevue wants to have, increase housing stock for people who can afford it, and with a reasonable financial cost incentive. So I support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Robertson.
Thanks. Really glad to hear that you're going to be coming back twice a year to check in on the status and goal achievement on our Affordable Housing Plan. Because if we don't measure it, and we don't count it, and we don't check in, you know, sometimes things can slip through. So that's great news. I'm supportive of extending the expiration date or getting rid of it altogether. Do you have a recommendation on which we should do?
We're recommending getting rid of the expiration date.
Okay. I'm supportive of that. I wanted to ask a couple of questions about the next phase of looking at the M F T E. So you said you're coming back next year on this to talk about the program?
I think I would describe it, there's a number of things we're due to check back in with you on and talk about how, how broad you may want to change scope. This would be one of those things.
Okay.
And we're coming back next month with an update on the Affordable Housing Strategy that's already scheduled for October, mid-October.
Okay.
But to bring forward changes for the Affordable Housing, for the M F T E, we're probably going to catch up, catch that up with the East Main changes.
Got it. So that'll, that hopefully will be early next year or late.
Correct.
Okay. Because I'm very supportive of that. I think we need to expand the area, including going just to citywide, where these can be allowed. If not citywide, then everywhere there's a regular transit service, whether it's light rail route or B R T line, et cetera. I think that we should make this more available to people. So that's, I'll just put in for that and hope that it comes up back quickly. And then when it comes back, I don't know that I 100% understand how someone does a project if they're using the F A R density bonus or exemption for affordable housing and the M F T E, because they have different standards. So for example, the F A R bonus under the land use code might provide a bonus for 80 to 120% of area median income, yet the M F T E only goes to 70%. So how do we, I, just when it comes back, I'd like a better understanding of how we can true it up, because I want them to enforce and leverage each other, so that if we have people using both programs, we get more affordable housing. So, and you don't need to go into that tonight.
Okay.
I would like to have a better understanding of that when we come back.
Okay.
On that, if you don't mind.
And to one of your comments about expanding citywide, I'm sure you meant this, it's only on multifamily areas citywide.
Right. You didn't, just, just not limiting it to these certain growth areas, any multifamily project, anywhere in Bellevue's borders.
And that would be a thing we certainly could talk about.
That does affordable housing at these levels. I'd love to have, I think it'll help encourage that. So.
Let the record state that at 7:05 PM, Councilmember Robertson suggested we have multifamily housing throughout the city.
No. We are not Minneapolis. We are not getting rid of single-family zoning, ever. But just the availability to use this program citywide, on multifamily.
There you go.
And commercial lots. Thanks.
Okay.
Councilmember Stokes.
So the phrase is wherever appropriate, right? Yeah. No, I think this is exciting. I do remember the conversations. We had, we had a good conversation before, and it wasn't easy to get to where we are, and we worked through it. And I think this is actually getting it out there. Sometimes you have to have the proof is in the pudding. We're starting to get there. So I think that's important. I don't have any other questions. I think we've gone over these. The five-year was reasonable at the time. We've looked at it, and it seems to be a success. And I think, and I do agree, there are things we can look at when we get it in place in the next, you know, few months from now. If we look at this, it's part of the whole affordable housing piece. But I'm, you know, very glad we have this in here. And it's been something, a good talking point with some of the other cities about what we're doing. And I think we should keep it and just make it, you know, without an expiration.
Great.
I would agree with the, to do it without the expiration. So I think you've heard from all of us, so that should be the, the direction. I don't know that, I don't think we have to actually take a vote on that tonight. The, I'm sorry, I just, oh, East Main. So part of, part of what's going on with East Main right now, as I remember, is there'll be some looking at the economics of the incentive system, one of which will be affordable housing. So do we need to take action to get M F T E into East Main sooner rather than later? Does that get considered as part of it? How does that work?
Logistically, it'll actually be two separate actions. So when the council eventually adopts a land use code, there will be an F A R incentive, presumably, not presuming too much about how your dialogue will go. And that'll be based on the economic work that you're describing. Separate from that, if you go to the M F T E ordinance, it identifies geographic areas.
Right.
Specifically. And so the boundary map will need to be expanded to include areas not currently contained, which East Main is one.
Okay. But we don't have to do that prior to considering the incentives?
We do make a consideration of how the incentives work together.
Okay.
So knowing how much lift we're going to get from the land use incentive will kind of help us to land how, the, what the affordability we require for the M F T E.
Okay. I think that, okay, that, that makes sense. I would, and it doesn't matter if it comes back by the end of this year or if it comes back sometime next year. I do think taking Councilmember Robertson up on the offer to maybe look at a greater expansion of it to all zones that have multifamily, or where appropriate, as Councilmember Stokes said, I, there may be some multifamily where it wouldn't be. I can't imagine that, but there may be. So I think it's definitely worth taking a look at that and seeing if we can get some, some more activity. Any, did, and has this, does that sound good to council at this point, what we're doing? Okay. Thank you.
It's going to come back on consent.
So come back.
That's a good idea.
I would like it to come back on consent.
Yeah, I'll make the motion. Why don't you just go ahead and do that? Just take the side. I moved to direct staff to bring back an ordinance for final adoption at a future meeting to extend the multifamily tax exemption program without a subsequent expiration date by mending section 4.52.130 of the Bellevue City Code.
Second.
And that it comes back on consent?
On consent.
Moved and seconded, and that it come back on consent. I just want to make sure this is not a land use matter, so we can bring it up on consent, right? We don't have to take an action.
I'll double check.
Yeah, let's, let's double check, but that is definitely the preference of the, of the council. Any other comment on the, the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries six, nothing with Councilmember Robertson. Motion carries six, nothing, with Councilmember Robertson, Robinson excused. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thanks for the, for the briefing. Do we have anything that we might be able to do in this section of the meeting?
We certainly can, Mayor. We have two reports into the City Manager Report, which we would normally cover in the regular session, but given the time that we have available now, we certainly could do them now.
Okay.
And so if, if that's the wish of the council, I could certainly, we could just go ahead and undo those now. So if, and the first one is on, we have two of them. One is on the neighborhood walks. If I could ask the, both Mike and Mark to join us at the table. As you'll recall, we started these neighborhood walks during the summer around three years ago with both the leadership team and staff, and that was to go out and greet the community. This year, some council members actually joined us on, on the walk itself. We had five walks this year, five different neighborhoods, which were, the walks were conducted in June and July. And we have both Mike McCormick-Huntlem and the Community Development Assistant Director, Mark Hyman, the Community Engagement Lead, here to tell us about those walks, what we heard, some great stories came out of it, and there's some definite themes that came out of the neighborhood walk. So with that, I'll go ahead and turn it over to you to walk the council through in this good story.
Great. Thank you, City Manager Miyaki, Mayor, council members. It's really a pleasure to be here tonight. Summer is coming to a close, and we want to take the opportunity to share a little bit about what our experience in neighborhood walks looked like over the summer. It was a gorgeous summer, but we found the rain. So, as you know, in neighborhood walks, well, for tonight, this really is for information only. We're not asking for any action from council. And neighborhood walks really builds on this very simple premise of outreach, which is it's best to go where people are. And so back in 2017, the City Manager was looking for a way for city leadership to get out into the community, get out in the neighborhoods, have conversations with residents, and find out what's really on people's mind. And sometimes it's fresh air to leave the building of City Hall, and to be able to have a different type of conversation with the community. And that sprung summer chats. In conversation with neighborhood leaders, they said, "We love summer chats, now get on your tennis shoes." And so we strapped on some tennis shoes and started walking the neighborhoods. And thus, the Neighborhood Walks program was born. As you can tell from the map, we're trying to spread it out, see different parts of the community, work with neighborhood associations or community groups, or just neighborhoods that we traditionally don't hear from, and walk the community with residents and hear their story. What's important, and as you all know, what's important about neighborhoods is everything is hyper-local. It's all about the house next door. It's about the traffic on their street. It's about the development that they're experiencing day-to-day, right? As a general theme, I want to stress, what we hear from residents is, "We love living in Bellevue." There is an immense thank you from residents that say, "Thank you for coming out. Thank you for being accessible. Thank you for listening to us." And then they talk about things that the city is doing and things that they're grateful for. And that was, again, our experience this year. To walk through the program this year, the highlights of it, some of the things that we heard, I'm going to turn it over to our Neighborhood Outreach Manager, Mark Hyman.
Thanks, Mike. Well, I think one of the things I would really like to emphasize is that we enjoy doing these very much as a staff. It gives us opportunity to learn, it gives us opportunity to share, gives us opportunity to really give residents an idea of how can you get some of the things that are very important to you acted on. So we emphasize several times during each of the Neighborhood Walks my Bellevue app, so that folks have a relationship with us, but they have the accountability of my Bellevue app. So as Mike said, we started at Brad's direction, 2017, to do summer chats, and then a resident really put a fine point on this, a resident that's now going to be part of Bellevue Essentials this fall, and basically said to us, said to Community Development and MAC, and MAC gave us the mandate to follow with what Brad had started, to come out and walk the neighborhood, bring your team, and include a member of the community. Well, in each of these walks, we have included and invited all of the community, and I would say some of the benefits that we see every year in every one of the walks is the opportunity for extended conversations. So it's not an email, it's not a post, it's not a three-minute one-way, but it's an extended two-way conversation where people can show us their home, can show us the home of their mother, can show us their elementary school, things that have changed, folks that have lived there for quite a while. But then also, we had experiences, we did last year, of folks that have lived in neighborhoods for 50 or 60 years, and then literally folks that have lived in that neighborhood for two weeks and somehow found out about a neighborhood walk, and they're glad to come and join us and share some of the things that they're excited about, why they've selected Bellevue, and why they've selected that neighborhood particularly. So those extended conversations that, that really kind of force us to think further, help us to kind of empathize, you know, even further than what we get to do, and have conversations that we very much relate to as far as our kids and our parents. And it's like, this is, each of those neighborhoods is unique, but there are unique folks within each of the neighborhoods as well. So we get to experience the neighborhoods, get to see great flowers, a variety of houses, respond to specific issues on the spot, and kind of have ongoing ways that we can, can work on those and encourage them to work through my Bellevue app, to be able to hear emerging concerns. So not just something that's a specific code compliance issue, but something that, that neighbors that know very well to start to see some of the trends. And then something that we love is for neighbors to make connections as well. These also inform, from a neighborhood outreach and neighborhood standpoint, help to inform some of our approaches on cultural conversations and Bellevue Essentials, and just kind of the way that we interact with our residents and them really teaching us how to do our job. So the overview of neighborhood walks this year, we did all evening walks. Last year, they were pretty warm, so we decided to do them in the evening during the week. We made shorter routes. We kind of de-emphasized that we need to be walking, you know, and getting exercise. But we really wanted to make these walks more accessible for residents, so we tried to have flatter walks. One of the neighborhoods actually put out chairs at different spots so that their residents could come out to the end of their driveway and, and wait for us. As Mike said, we had rain on just about every one of these, and a couple of them, it was kind of a dramatic forecast, and the, you know, the response was, "We're going to go." We went to places that had covering. We were anticipating for shade, but it was actually to protect from the rain. But in spite of that, we averaged about 19 residents on each of the walks. We had long-term and two-week residents, and this year, kind of the theme was, we had more rain, more kids, and more dogs, and that was all great. We had a lot to celebrate, some great things to see along the way. Our first walk, we started at Surrey Downs, and just hear the story of that park, but also, also the story of the school, and, and the firbert trees, and all of that. East Rail, we got to walk, and we actually got to the point, the picture that you see here, it was the most threatening evening, but we got to this point, and the sun came out, we were able to see Mount Rainier for a few seconds, and it was just a great thing, kind of that, kind of the juxtaposition of a neighborhood that's changing a lot, a district that's developing, but to be able to see Mount Rainier and what we enjoy very much about our area. Quickly then, Woodridge, traffic calming. We got to see the East Gate Neighborhood Enhancement Project that had happened over the last couple of years. And as in past years, we heard about very local concerns, some code compliance issues that we could pass on, some themes about larger homes replacing smaller ramblers, concerns about trees. And even as we walked that Surrey Downs, West Bellevue neighborhood, we were able to walk by some tree stumps that people pointed out to us and had some questions about, you know, what, what happened here, and then some responses. Traffic calming, and then local ideas for improvements as well. As we look to the future, we would very much love to continue to do these in the future. We will do more and more planning with neighbors, with the idea that they know the things in their neighborhood that they would love for us to see. Even as we make them shorter, we want to see some representative sites of what's happening in the neighborhood, what's changing, and what's been there for a long time. We've seen the power of the word of mouth, of residents talking to each other and, and saying to their mother, "Hey, come along with me. I'm coming to your neighborhood, you come with me." We'd like to increase attendance, the more, the better. We just enjoy it so much. And then additional accommodations, just even the term neighborhood walk is limiting for a number of people, but we want people to be able to meet us at the beginning, or at the end, or at the end of their driveway, so that everyone can have a conversation. So again, we are not asking for any particular direction, but this is for information. Appreciate having each of you on walks this summer, and residents love it. It's one of those things that our staff and at each of the walks, Brad requested that, that directors go to it each, to go on two of the walks each, and I think all of us have just learned things along the way and enjoyed doing it together, so.
One final comment. One thing I really appreciate is the support from city leadership to do something like this. There's something that changes when the directors of the departments are on walks with residents, and they're saying, "I have a traffic concern," and you say, "Well, let's talk to our transportation director," right? Or, "Here's our fire chief," right? All of a sudden, the, the dynamic between resident request and the leadership of the staff shrinks, right? What you think is an insurmountable city in a black box becomes people who are listening and want to hear local concerns. And so every concern that was raised was directed to the appropriate department for response and was responded to. And so we're following up with everything. And if you want, and I know you do, a complete digest of what we heard from the different neighborhoods, this report is posted online. Just go to BellevueWalk.gov, Neighborhood Walks, and you can see the report there, but you have a hard copy as well, and kind of see what we heard specifically from each neighborhood area. We're happy to answer any questions that you have, but that concludes our presentation.
Thank you. Any quick questions from council members? Councilmember Stokes.
Yeah, we're just looking at, it'd be good to read this piece, looking at the comments, most of them are pretty positive. There's some people raise issues on this, one like, you know, not enforcing codes, or why didn't you build a wall higher, or those kind of things. And some of them are very positive, asking to do more. What's your follow-up on those? How does, how does that work?
Well, all of those responses, we have, if that director wasn't there that evening, we have passed on to the appropriate departments. So frequently, that director is there, but we have taken notes and passed those on to each of the departments for them to respond to with their technical expertise.
Okay. Any others? Councilmembers on?
I just had a quick question. So as you look at the next year, I was thinking about the fact that, you know, some neighborhoods have established neighborhood associations, and so it's easier perhaps to get the word out. But there's a lot of neighborhoods where, as I understand it, some of the community clubs or neighborhood associations are lacking some volunteers, and so maybe they're not as active. How will we really look more broadly at those neighborhoods that maybe don't have as good of a pipeline for communication, and also the ones where maybe English is not their first language, and so they may not be as comfortable coming out to walk? Have you thought about that? As well as renters versus homeowners, because I think we also have a lot more renters in our community.
Right. Part of it is where we walk, and we try to put out signs, and we do all of the online stuff, but having signs out so people are aware of it. And we did encounter, particularly in East Gate, we had a, a couple of residents that didn't speak English, and that was just, I can't put any other word on it except painful, because we just, you know, could not communicate except trying to smile as meaningfully as possible. So, so we've talked about that. How could we at least have some simple phrases that we could pass on? And so we're kind of stretching our cultural competence as we go further and further, and so that would be one thing, is that we are learning about how to do that as we go out into the community. And then areas where there's not established clubs and that sort of thing, we're also learning about that as well. East Gate would again be an example of that, where they've not had established associations in the past, but this was something that, as they did a potluck, I think it was back in May, that we informed them, this is coming. They had about 60 folks come out to the library. So kind of taking forward what they were, what they were telling us. So it's a learning thing to try to find folks and inform people, but again, we did find someone that...
Oh, yeah, we're, don't get me wrong, we're doing a great job. These were just some thoughts I had. One thing I do want to bring up, because Councilmember Lee and I were at an event last night where the speaker was talking about artificial intelligence, and actually what they mentioned was that there are now some devices where you can speak one language and, and it automatically translates to pretty good accuracy. So I'm wondering if, if those are actually commercially available, whether that's an opportunity to look into picking up a couple of these devices.
I know there's something that Service First incorporates along the line. We just haven't taken them with us yet.
Yeah, anyway, but thank you. I had, I enjoyed going on the walks.
If you, if you, councilmembers, if you haven't seen the translators at Service First, stop by and, and take a look, it's, it's very interesting. Councilmember Lee.
Thank you. Well, I enjoyed the walks. I appreciate it. I was at the East Gate walk, and I wasn't aware that there's a language problem from somebody. And, you know, instead of all, without going through this technological device of translation, you know, which you, you know, probably don't have at the time, I was there, and I'm surprised that nobody pointed out to me, say, "Hey, this is a guy who might be able to help you." You know, I'm staring right at you in the eyes, and you're looking at me in the eyes. So let's be flexible. All right? And so, but it was a good walk. We enjoyed it. I don't know what anybody else will say, but I had a good time.
Yep. Thank you. Appreciate the offer.
The office is there, standing, longstanding for the last 20 years.
Of course.
Councilmember Newen House.
Mark Hyman, thanks for the update. I'm a huge fan of this program, and really want to give a shout out to all the directors that have embraced this program as well. And another reason I love this is that, just what you pointed out, Mike, you're literally solving problems on the walk, right? Here's an issue, who do I talk to? Or I didn't know that resource was available, or how do I, you know, just all these questions and all these issues that could resolve right there. And the fact that we're reaching out to the community versus them feeling like they always have to come to City Hall, I think pays huge dividends down the line. I've been a huge advocate of this for some while, and I appreciate City Manager Miyaki championing this program as well. Yeah, even though it might spoil some summer walks sometimes for doing other things, but I think this is just, just, just so important. And I know this program will continue to evolve, keep getting better, you know, I mean, there are a lot of things that you've identified already in terms of accessibility or language, et cetera. So I know they'll keep getting better, and then as well as getting to those neighborhoods that we haven't gotten to yet, but this, this is, this is really important, especially when we've heard, or at least I've heard some at times, you know, I don't never hear from the city unless there's something wrong. So this, again, is this building up really goodwill and the fact that the city can do so much, and we want to hear from our, from our, from our residents, and we want to be a partner in solving issues and problems. So I, I'm just a huge fan of this program, so keep up the good work, and I look forward. I was on two this year, and I look forward to, to walking in them next year as well.
Councilmember Robertson.
Thanks. I was, thank you for inviting councilmembers this year. I don't think we were invited the first year, and I really was happy to be able to go on one of these walks. So just, I think that the benefits of this, and I think I'd like to make sure we continue to do it, is that it allows us to have that closer tie to the community, where we have better communications and partnership with our residents, but also, in doing so, we can see themes developing through the neighborhoods, and there, and therefore make us as a city more proactive rather than reactive. And so I know that when there's longer-term relationships with people who are the eyes and ears in parts of the city where staff may not be, it just can make us much more effective. So bravo, and thanks to all the directors. Thanks to our city manager for making the directors go on two walks. I'm sure they were happy to do it, but I think it's really great that they did all go out, and I know that the public appreciates it.
Thank you.
Okay. Did you want to have a, go, no, I'm, I'm just going to wrap up here, but go ahead with that.
Really wanted to recognize the, again, the, you know, just the leadership behind this, especially out of it. I was thinking it's the MAC, Mike, and Mark, the three Ms, that really got behind this, and as well as the leadership team who took their time, their personal time to get out there. I think one of the things we really heard of, they really appreciated us going to them instead of having to come to City Hall. And people appreciate, there, there are some, and I'll tell you, some were loaded for bear when we got there, but by the end of it, actually, they felt that they were... we got there. But by the end of it, actually, they felt that they were heard and were satisfied. So I, I just wanted to say those few remarks, because the, the credit really goes to the team here. So thank-
Yeah, I, this is really a great program. The, the neighborhood program that, that we have is, I think, you know, just completely top-notch of what people do in the region. I, I think, I got a question at the Leadership Eastside event the other day about, you know, how you can get more people feel welcome, how can, you know, that. And I, I talked about a couple of the, of the programs. I wish I had remembered to talk about this one, because this too is, is a great way. I am in the process of doing my last council corner, and the, the, and, you know, and I, I had had in my mind, I'm jotting down all of these things we've done over 16 years, projects and plans and parks and things like that, that, you know, I'm very proud of. And then I thought about it, and I said, you know, that's not really why we do this. And so I've written it, I hope it gets in, but written it about, really about many of the, the public contacts that I've had over the years, with people, a lot of that coming on a campaign trail and, and, and doorbelling, but in other ways as well. And I think, you know, those stories of, of how we learn what's important to people is just really important. When you're at their door, you're at their driveway, when you're walking on their street, and they can tell you what we do as a city that fulfills their life, and how we can do that better, that's just pure gold in terms of the communication. And so, again, congratulate you for it. You come back over to my side of the city next year, I'll go for the walk.
We will make that happen.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. So Mayor, we have one other item under the manager's report I'd like to bring forward if the council is able to that. And so if I could have Mike and his team come. You know, we're here to really celebrate a milestone, a huge milestone, which occurred in early September, and that is, the city's become 100% paperless on the submittal and processing of development permits. And this has been really a multi-year journey that's really been, in terms of being led by Mike Brennan and his department in, in moving this forward. You know, I have a number of points I can make here, but I really want to turn it over to Mike and his, his staff. Joining us is Mike Brennan, who you all know, who is the Director of Development Services. And on to his right is Jake Hesselgasser, with the Building Review Supervisor. And to his, to Mike's left is Monica Brown, the Business Support Technician. So I'm going to just go ahead and turn it over to you, Mike, and, and break about this program, because it's something to break about.
Thank you, city manager Miyaki. Good evening, Mayor Chairman, members of the council. It is really great to be here tonight, not asking for something, but sharing, and appreciate the time to do that. So as Mr. Miyaki mentioned, we have reached a major milestone in development services continuous improvement and kind of evolution in the delivery of the services that we provide to the community, both homeowners who are improving their, their property and developers who are helping us build our downtown skyscrapers. Effective on Friday, September 6, we have become 100% paperless in every permit that we process in the city. That, that comes from intake all the way through until we issue it, including submittal of plans, payment of fees, review of those documents, and then ultimately issuing the documents at the end of the process for building, land use, utilities, right-of-way permits, and fire permits. This has been really a multi-year endeavor, and really just a little bit of history to give it a little bit of context. It really started back over a decade ago, where a small group of us in some eastside cities got together and said, you know, we should work to try to align the way we do these services since we're serving a lot of the same customers. It happened over lunch, and decided maybe we should do lunch again, and had a few lunches together. And eventually, the relationships and the collaborations started to grow, leading to really in 2003 or the early 2000s, the formation of the E-City Gov Alliance, which was an outfall of this regional collaboration, and then the creation of MyBuildingPermit.com, which is our regional permitting website. We worked together to kind of get our technologies to sync up and continue to kind of find ways to do our services more effectively and more consistently. We initially launched with over-the-counter permits. Those are the simple electrical mechanical permits that don't require plans. But just getting the technology back in those days to all connect together was a big challenge that we, that we overcame. And but it really added convenience and simplification to our customers now, for we were issuing hundreds of permits now without requiring them to come to City Hall and wait in line, which was really the old-school approach. That continued to evolve as, back in the kind of 2011, 2013, we said, "We've got to figure out how to take this to the next level and process plans," which is a whole new level of complexity and, and challenge, and not only technology-wise, but just the way we do our work. It changed the way staff reviewed plans, changed the way permit processing managed documents. It dealt with all kinds of public records management issues that we had to deal with. So again, lots of additional complexity. But we figured it out, and we started issuing some of the less complex permits with plans online back in that point. But that was kind of the first endeavor. The big lift was really trying to get all of the rest of the large, complex projects, the high-rises, the land use permits, the things that have lots of variable pieces of information. And I'm going to hand it over to Mr. Hesselgasser, who can talk about kind of how we, how this team led the way in moving that final mile to the finish of 100% permitting.
Thank you, Mike. Good evening, council. Thank you for giving us the chance to share a little bit about our paperless journey with you this evening. As you can see from the timeline that Mr. Brennan laid out, it's, it's really been somewhat of a marathon race, and running the last mile is often the toughest on a long journey like that. Our most recent paperless initiative was kicked off when the city council adopted the 2017-2018 budget. And within that budget was set forth the resources that allowed us to really do this big lift. We started our planning efforts in 2017, and approximately 80% of our applications at that point were coming through MyBuildingPermit.com, but we still had 20% that, that weren't coming through the portal. So we really had to ask ourselves, why was that, and what was preventing the customers from submitting online? We fortunately had a five-year strategic plan that was developed in 2015, known as our Development Services roadmap, so we had some guidance to look at there. We also conducted a very extensive customer outreach survey in 2016, and were able to hear from our customers about what was causing them issues. And so we took all that information, and we really took a look at it closely and found that some of our applicants were finding it easier to submit in paper, that they could get through our process a little bit quicker with some of their applications. We also found that some of the process steps on the front-end intake side weren't as efficient as they could be. And so we also went back out to our staff, and we asked them, "Hey, what were those pain points or those issues that you see in the process?" And with that, we began to look at new innovative ways that we could leverage our technology differently to make the permitting process a little bit more efficient. And one of the, this resulted in several permit process improvements, and led to a number of efficiencies, and Monica's going to share a few of those with you right now.
So overall, we were able to leverage our investments in technology to create a more efficient permitting process. We simplified our permit intake by reducing the number of steps it takes to apply for a permit online. We decreased the number of days it takes before the review process would normally start. And to onboard the customers to our new process, we offered how-to workshops to the public and to our city staff. We installed some self-help computers out in the permit center, where customers can come in and be assisted with online applications. And some of the environmental benefits include printing and storage cost being greatly reduced. We have started to see space savings in areas that were previously dedicated to filing cabinets and plan storage. Customer trips to City Hall are reduced, saving both fuel and time. So fun fact, we ran some numbers. With the paperless process, we estimate that the annual reduction in printed plan sets would equate to roughly 40 acres of paper, which is enough to cover the entire downtown park with two sheets of paper every year. And so with that, I'll hand it back to Mr. Brennan.
So we just wanted to spend just a few minutes tonight sharing this with the council and the community. This is really something that we're very proud of. This was really the result of, of this regional collaboration to create a portal that is a one-stop place where our customers could go to, to obtain their permits. The great work of staff, both internally and with our regional partners, to figure out the systems and the technology connections and the process improvements, you name it. It really was a Herculean effort to get this done, but we are there, and we are now at 100%. In a staff celebration last week, you know, I, I said, "You know, I'm really proud that we've accomplished 100% permitting. That's just a tremendous thing, but I'm even more proud about how we accomplished it." It really was regional collaboration and tremendous amount of, you know, know-how and commitment internally in the organization to make this happen. So very proud of this accomplishment. So we wanted to share with you this evening. So thank you again for your time.
Great. Thank you very much. It is an incredible accomplishment. And in a city that is so high-tech, we ought to have a way, a high-tech way, that we can do all of our permitting processes. And you've found a way, and I think also, what you've done is you've found ways to streamline the process, which is also important. It gets that, that, well, I was going to say it gets the paper through the system, but I guess it gets the electrons through the system now, which is probably a better way to do it. Jennifer, did you have your hand up?
Yes, I did. Thank you. I'm really excited about this. I have a couple of questions, though. So yeah, this is going to make it so much better for the vast majority of people. So I have a question about the, how we take things electronically. Because I know that there are programs like CAD designs that most professionals use, but I'm thinking about the person that's doing their own permit without a professional. How are we making sure that they can transmit electronically? So if they don't have the right software, can they, but they have the plans, can they scan them as a PDF at the local FedEx or, and upload them that way? Okay, they don't have to have a special-
All of the experts.
Yeah.
That was one of the challenges that we faced with some of the, you know, mom-and-pop small businesses or homeowners who are doing maybe a deck addition or something like that. The self-help computers that Monica mentioned in the permit center, along with that comes the help of the permit technicians to help with maybe scanning small plan sets if need be.
Okay.
We try to discourage that, of course, and offer those other resources that maybe somebody can just do from their home rather than have to come here to City Hall. But that was a, a small customer base that we did have to plan for.
Yeah, I thought that was a small amount, but I'm glad that we have a safety net for them to be able to submit online without having to buy a whole new software system or computer or whatnot. So that's my first question. The second question is whether we are seeing, if people are, I haven't tried the online system, but if people are transmitting, say, a building permit online, or another land use entitlement permit online, does it allow them to submit it if it's incomplete?
We do have it as screening intake process that our permit technicians go through to check to make sure the application's complete.
Okay.
And then also during the initial review process, those things that may be lacking in nature, then our review staff would make comments on that.
Okay, I was hoping that it would, yeah, because I know one of that's all cities, the first check is, is it a complete application? I was hoping that this would have enough information in the system that people would realize if they were submitting something that was incomplete, and you would have a higher percentage of applications that are complete on first submission. But you have, do you know?
Well, one of the other things that we did was, we tried to leverage MVP, MyBuildingPermit.com a little bit differently in asking some front-end intake questions that would determine things like routing and application completeness that were previously done by city staff. So that was a good example of how we kind of use the technology differently than some of the other surrounding cities. And we've shared that information with, you know, our, our other cities and MVPs, so.
Good, because yeah, the sooner people have a complete application, and the sooner they respond to additional reviews or request for additional information, the faster their permit can be processed. So do, do we know, or do we anticipate that by going to everything online, that we will have faster permit processing? Or is it going to just be the same, but it'll be electronic, and we'll be able to find the documents faster because they're going to be all right there?
I mean, so absolutely, there will be some efficiencies in the system. No question about it. Not only for us, but for our customers in accessing the information that they need and, you know, uploading comments that come from staff. So there's a lot of variables that go into play on what processing timelines are. We set, that's marks for each permit type with first review and then ultimate permit issuance, and we manage to those timelines. So we are in the process of actually relooking at all of those timelines in this new environment, and trying to reset some of those timelines in taking advantage of, I, I think, the technology, the benefit that the technology brings. So the answer to the question is, for some permits, I think we will actually see some improved efficiencies in the timelines. For others, maybe not as much, because a lot of the time is really about the technical review that goes on, and not so much about the document transfers, et cetera.
Right. Well, great. Well, it'd be great after this has been in place a year or two, for us to understand how it's working and if we're actually seeing some efficiencies. So thanks so much for the presentation. I'm real excited about this.
Great. Councilmember Stokes, Councilmember Song, then Councilmember Lee, and Councilmember Newenhouse. And we have about eight minutes, so please just be aware of that.
First question is, what other cities are doing this? Have reached 100%?
So, I don't know that we have anybody that's at 100%.
Snohomish County, I think, is the closest with us, yeah.
Probably the largest, though, overall, by far, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, great, okay.
We're kind of, we are, we have been kind of the frontrunner and the leader in as Mr. Hesselgasser mentioned. Snohomish County's working really hard. They use the same tracking system that we use, and so we've been able to kind of work with each other to, to resolve some of the issues.
It should be a good incentive for the other cities to finish it up on their side, right? Yeah. And to Councilmember Robinson's, Robertson's question, apparently does reduce the number of front-end permits that take steps, so that could have some time benefits on that, yeah. The other, one other question I had is, I know when development's coming forward, even smaller projects and big projects, people come in and, and talk to us, and have, and go to the Planning Commission with these huge piles of plans and everything. That eliminates some of that at this stage, but when you get into the development part, you're still going to have the people coming in with their blueprints and everything else, right? Or not? I mean, I'm just curious about that. We see a lot less of those.
Well, see, we should see zero plans.
Okay. Even, even in when they, so it's all going to be done electronically, when they get together and figure out the land use code versus what they're playing, all that?
It doesn't prevent people who are coming in to meet with us to bring a set of plans and throw them on the table? And yeah, that, that's kind of normal business.
So eventually, would we be able to do that? Would they come, where they could communicate with us electronically as well?
They do now.
Yeah, I know they do some, yeah.
Yes, absolutely. And there's, yeah, the more collaborative, collaboration back and forth, looking at a set of documents. Yeah, it's kind of, I guess, a real quick response. It, it sets a whole new platform. Now, we've moved away from paper. We don't have to manage these two processes together anymore. So the next set of innovation, who knows where we go now? I mean, it really does set a whole new, new platform that will help us kind of create the next big lift that we take. We've got, you know, there's still obviously continuous improvement that needs to happen with this, but it really is kind of the next evolution in service delivery for us.
Yeah, thank you.
Councilmember Song?
Yeah, so thank you. 10 years, that takes a lot of patience and vision and collaboration to make it happen. So when you were talking about the next iteration, I wanted to focus on that, because to me, it is that long-term retrieval. It is whether we're set up for, I mean, I can envision that then, you can have a GIS platform with, where our folks can be out in the field with iPads, be able to pull up drawings, take a look at things, and that our developers and residents that are doing remodels will have real-time information about the process, the progress of their permit, progress of their inspection, being able to schedule inspection. I mean, so we really can start looking at a e-world where a lot of those things can happen. So my question is, as you think about the current location where it's mostly desks, where, you know, it's set up so a set of plans can be laid out, that are we looking at potentially revamping that space so that you can have more large screens? They could be touchscreens. People can pull up drawings, and you can do what you need to do. So those are things that I think from an innovation standpoint, we need to be looking at next to support this effort.
A nice to-do list, and a lot of the things that you described about online inspection status, check, check the box, that's all done. You can do that now. As far as looking at our space and reconfiguring it, we've done a lot. We have monitors that they use now, but absolutely, looking at, you know, how do we become even more contemporary in the environment that we create. So very, very good point.
So I appreciate everything- So, I appreciate everything you're doing, the how-to workshop, the self-help stations. I mean, that really gets to how do we maximize our resources and be more efficient? And the more that the folks that are coming in understand upfront, the less time they waste having to do rework, which costs everybody money. So, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Councilmember Lee, followed by Councilmember Nguyen-House.
Thank you. Good job, congratulations. I got two questions. One is how to workshop, do you do online or in person?
In person.
In person?
Yep.
Why not online? This is easy?
Well, it was for people that weren't so familiar with, with online work that they could, that we could come in and show them how to do it, where they would go, what it would look like, so.
Okay, so it's necessary to be in person?
Right. And we're also creating self-help videos that will help people.
Yeah, I apologize, I turned it off, stupid. Anyway, our second question is, there's cost saving, obviously, 40 acres of paper, you know? So, does that equate to savings for customers, efficiency?
It does. And when you equate that average cost per printing sheet, that's about $600,000 in that acre footage of land cost.
But they're not seeing the cost saving yet because of the cost of technology developing it, right? So, eventually, they will see it.
Well, I think they're seeing it now. I mean, they're seeing, they're seeing a cost, so there's a, there's a lower cost for our customers to get into the system. They don't need to bring in a hand truck for, for the plans anymore.
Or a hand truck for money, I was thinking.
Exactly.
So, that's a good, that's a good, good, good answer. So, it is in terms of the, you know, cost-saving efficiency or not. So, anyway, last statement I just want to make is that you mentioned about the next set of innovation. Next set of innovations is getting rid of people, workers, artificial intelligence, so. That's not a very good sort of thing after the end, but.
Well, artificial intelligence could be part of the equation in how we communicate with our customers in the future. That's right.
Thank you, Mike.
Councilmember Nguyen-House. I have got so many comments I couldn't.
I don't want you to go anywhere, okay? I want you to stay here and keep innovating for us. Thank you. No, most of my questions have been answered already, just, just great job. And so, I think this further bolsters our tech city reputation here in the city of Bellevue, which is fantastic. I'd like to see us get more recognition for programs just like this, the fact that we are doing that. To follow up on a question from Councilmember Lee, so obviously, we understand the environmental impact, and there's a cost savings to the developer. What about the cost savings to the city as well? Obviously, maybe some more space because we don't have to file everything, but can we quantify the dollar amount that this might be saving the city?
So, I think that, that one's a little more challenging to quantify. I think it is changing the way we do business. It moves costs around a bit. I mean, we still have staff, the technical staff, that we need to review the documents, et cetera.
Sure.
But we're not handling the paper, so we're more efficient in that, operating that way. We need to buy new technology, obviously, to, large monitors and things like that to review the documents.
Sure.
So, I think there's, there are definitely savings, you know, when you look at the ledger in one or two columns, but there are also some shifts in costs that happen as well. End of the day, you know, our costs are translated through our fees and our rates, and our rates are pretty stable and have been for a long time, and this is not going to create a rate bounce. This is probably helping us maintain moderate rate.
What do you think our total investment in this technology has been over the last 10 years?
It's been multiple millions of dollars.
Yeah.
If you think about the technology and the staff time to accomplish this, it's, it's, I think the budget proposal that was approved back in 2017, 18 was a little over a million dollars.
Okay.
Yeah, for staff time and technology enhancements.
Well, great, congratulations again, and it's a fantastic milestone for your department and our city, and it's also integrated into the MyBellevue app, which I always love to see, and I know it's always of concern to the mayor as well, so you gotta keep promoting that app, but thank you so much.
Well, again, just superb work on this, and, you know, there are, there are many environmental benefits to this, let alone the, you know, the amount of paper that does not have to be entered. There are trips to City Hall that don't have to happen. There is time, there's staff time for us greeting someone, there's staff time for a person from an architect's office or a construction firm to drive over here to come in to make a meeting. I mean, it just, it does so many ways to be able to reduce costs within the entire building permit thing. And I have found, too, over the years, when I've gotten complaints, and a lot of times legitimate complaints, from people who are doing, I think as Councilmember Robertson said, it's, you know, somebody who's doing a small remodel, they've had some plans drawn up for them, they've got the plans, they're submitting, there's a response back from the plans inspectors, and I've found a lot of times, it is the response back to the person where the plans sit and sit and sit for a number of days before they get fixed and sent back in. And part of that is, you know, everybody's busy, so if you don't have to make the trip to City Hall, you can get the plans updated by being able to send them in. Hopefully, that will cut down on some of that for the people who are doing the smaller projects. So, it'd be great to track and see whether that's happening. So, again, great job. We've got a couple of minutes between now and the main session of the council, so there's no more business to come before the city council and study session. Study session's adjourned. I'll call this meeting of the Bellevue City Council to order. This is the meeting of September 16th, 2019, and I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Mayor Chalmak.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Robinson, Councilmember Lee, Councilmember Lee.
Here.
Councilmember Nguyen-House.
Here.
Councilmember Robertson.
Present.
Councilmember Stokes.
Here.
And Councilmember Zahn.
Here.
Okay, thank you. If you would all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's see, we have a proclamation, and then we have the presentation of an award from the Puget Sound Regional Council, a Vision 2040 Award, but first, I will do the Whereas the city of Bellevue recognizes the needs for adequate nutrition as basic, as a basic goal for each resident, and whereas no parent should have to send a child to school hungry, no baby should be without the comfort of the, of the feedings needed for mental and physical growth, no elderly person's health should be jeopardized by lack of appropriate foods, and whereas food banks, emergency and hot meal programs working with our cities, local churches, social service agency, and hundreds of volunteers are striving day in and day out to stem the rising tides of hunger, but still need more help. And whereas we believe that when our citizens who are not involved hear of the desperate needs of the hungry, an outpouring of community assistance will follow. And whereas the emergency feeding programs of Seattle and King County coordinate an annual food drive to help support the effort of their program and the area's food banks in fighting hunger, which will be held at grocery stores throughout King County on Saturday, September 21st, 2019. Now therefore, I, John Chalmak, Mayor of the City of Bellevue, Washington, and on behalf of its city council, do hereby proclaim the date of September 21st, 2019, as Mayor's Day of Concern for Hung, for the Hungry in Bellevue, and strongly urge all citizens to join the emergency feeding program and our local food banks to nourish those who are hungry. And again, I would encourage people this Saturday to, if you're at your local grocery store, to pick up an extra bag of groceries for this Day of Concern and help feed those in both the Bellevue community and our broader community throughout the region. So, thank you. We'll now move to a PSRC Vision 2040 Award presentation. Josh, do you want to come on down and tell us, tell us what we've won?
What you've won? Think of Price is Right, or Let's Make a Deal, something like that. Mayor Chalmak, members of the council, thank you so much for having me here this evening. I'm Josh Brown, I'm the Executive Director of the Puget Sound Regional Council, I'm here with Valentina Nolan, CEO for Imagine Housing. I'm here to present a Vision 2040 Award to the city, to Imagine Housing, and a number of partners. Our Vision 2040 Awards are a way for PSRC to recognize all the great work that's happening in the region by our membership and other partners to implement the region's long-range growth, economic development, and transportation strategies. We do a lot of things long-term at PSRC. In fact, I know the city spent a lot of time thinking about how you can provide feedback to our Vision 2050 Plan, a plan for growth out to 2050, but the implementation on the ground, it's being done by folks like you and other partners. The 30 Bellevue Project is an incredible new, affordable, green development, close to downtown. It's able to home, it'll be a home to 63 households, mostly families, and more than half of whom are households getting back on their feet after experiencing homelessness. It's a fantastic example of what we can do together. So, Valentina, I'd love for you to offer a few words and share some of your perspectives on this wonderful project.
Sure. First of all, thank you so much for the award.
Congratulations.
We really appreciate it. And all of you council members, thank you so much for helping support this project, and it really touched me to hear the proclamation that you just read because I'm quite certain that people in Bellevue who help support feeding the homeless and hungry will be helping people at 30 Bellevue. We had a board meeting earlier this evening, and one of the things that came out of that board meeting was that we recently just received beds for the last families who were living on the floor since May, just this past week, and two little children got their first beds ever and burst into tears when they received those beds at 30 Bellevue, which is just down the street from here. So, we just want to say thank you, and I would like to really congratulate my team, Megan Adams, who was the project manager, she brought this from start to finish, and Damian from SMR Architects, who helped design this beautiful building and helped get it built. And we just want to say thank you to Bellevue for everything that you've done for us and for the community.
Thank you very much. We can't do it without all of the great partners that we have in the community like Imagine Housing, and we do it with organizations like the Puget Sound Regional Council in planning for our region's growth. 30 Bellevue is just a remarkable project. It is a beautiful facility, but the beauty is really on the inside with bringing, I think, again, it's 63 people, 63 families inside, providing them housing, and, you know, the story about the kids getting their beds is, you know, just, it's heart, it's heartbreaking and heartwarming at the same time. So, I think what we're gonna do is get a picture, we usually take a picture right down here in front of the dais.
Sure, thank you.
So, we're gonna take a brief break, we'll do that, and then we'll get on with the agenda. Thank you.
Congratulations.
We've got some board members that'll join.
Thank you.
Be back, back in order. The first item is approval of the agenda. We have already done the two items listed under the report of the city manager, so with that change, I would. I need a second.
Second, as amended.
Moved and seconded to approve the amended agenda, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. We are now at communications, written and oral. You have three minutes to speak on a subject to the Bellevue City Council. When you come forward, give us your name and your address. Is the, oh, there it is, yes, it is. The light comes on, and that means the timer has started, the green light. The yellow light means you have one minute, and when the red light comes on, we ask that you wrap up. How many people do we have signed up?
This evening, there are six speakers signed up.
Okay, so we're gonna be able to get this done within the half-hour time period that we allot for this. So, with that, I will ask the clerk to please call the speakers in the order that they signed up.
The first speaker is Michelle Pace.
Hi, first, thank you for giving me three minutes to tell my story. My name's Michelle Pace. You may recognize my name because I apparently flooded your inboxes with one email, so I apologize. I lost my housing in February of this year, and before I get into that, I want to sort of, before I focus on my homeless journey, I want to kind of talk about my successes in life. I'm 43 years old, I have a 14-year-old daughter, who I've raised by myself since she was a year. She attends Mamish High School, and I bought my first house when I was 22, and I've since owned three additional homes, been a homeowner. I got my real estate license when my daughter was an infant, and my first listing was in Somerset in 2006, and I had a lucrative, six-figure first year of real estate. When the market tanked, I went back to school and completed my bachelor's, and I was 38 when that happened. Currently, my daughter, so we lost our housing in February, and we've been couch surfing since then. Prior to losing my apartment, I contacted all of the local organizations for help and was declined for one reason or another. I was in an imminent danger, I, there's a whole list of things that I was excluded from. I guess what I'm asking today is if there is any opportunity or someone that can walk me through the system, like from start to finish, so that I can get back into society and be a contributing member. I'm, I brought my resume with me, I brought my letter of references, like, I'm, I'm ready to go, but I need housing. I called Hope Link when I
killer principle. My name, Alex Zimmerman, and I want to speak about Agenda Number Five. What is very unique, what is I once speak for a long time and speak many times, is about us community, about everything what is involved in us government. So, for 30-plus years, a long time lives here. Yeah, I cannot find one honest man who worked for government. And I give you example about what is going on. So, Bellevue prosecute me twice with each my class action. Pure fabrication of case, 100 percentage punishment, typical for Gestapo or KGB. Five years ago, Bellevue Police evicted me from my apartment in Bellevue when my case in appeal of court. I don't think so has happened before in American history. They not care. They have a power what is one man like me cannot doing, same like a Nazi or commie, KGB or Gestapo, is identical. It's not everything. I have 40 ticket from Bellevue, who cost me approximately $10,000 for this year. I spoke with manager, his hair, for last year about red camera, because red camera is a pure fraud, and I know how fixes this, very easy. You know what it mean? He never give me answer for three year dozen time. I have few dozen complaint to city of Bellevue and to another department, you know what it mean, from Olympia to Bellevue in Seattle. I never see one positive word. I have 11 trespasses from Seattle for 1,200 day, only for my opinion. I have trespass few year week ago from King Country. I have before, but right now sheriff give me trespass for one year, because they don't have a power doing something what is doing Seattle, and they won't be like a Seattle, because it's what is I call you, a Nazi social democrat mafia, a criminal, a bunch of criminal, and this go worse and worse. Right now, Seattle, King Country, it will be state for another few year, will be a control of one party system, it is always fascism. So, I speak right now to everybody who not freaking idiot, because only they generate idiot, a poor critina going work right now for us government, for this we have a fascism, because no smart people. When you broken law inside and work for government, you out. And people knows this, and everybody want keep family, money, and life. I don't, this not surprise me. So, right now, I speak to everybody, we need clean this dirty government what is we have right now, everywhere in state almost tame, west coast, state, yes. Stand up, America. Is this exactly what is we need doing? Thank you very much.
Julie Cox.
Bless you.
Mine is, our homes are most important and most valuable assets that we purchase in our life generally. And whether you...
Could I ask you to state your names?
Julie Cox.
Thank you.
And whether we're in an R3 or in R5, we buy our property because we like the environment, we like the foliage, the trees, and the size of the property. And then after 40 years, someone has a piece of property in our neighborhood, in our peaceful, quiet, tree-lined neighborhood, who decides, they figured out after 20 years, their property is large enough to divide it into two. That means they take all the trees down, all the brush and bushes, and then they put up little itty-bitty trees, because they have to put up so many, replace so many, but they're never the same. I would like Bellevue to prevent this from happening. We have had numerous occasions where they built right up to the minimum line, they removed the trees, and we're left with a devalued piece of property. And I seen it at least eight times in our neighborhood. They divide it, they're house to house. If I wanted to live five feet from my neighbor's house, I'd go up to Rose Hill, where they've done that. They've chopped up their lots, put a long driveway, have three or four houses coming off a private road. I don't want that to happen to us in northeast Bellevue. And it's happening. I don't know. We bought our home, the home, the property should stay the same. The land should stay the same. They're all on half acres. That should work. Don't change it on us. Don't allow these people to make our life unpleasant. They move, they go on, they get their money, and, and we're stuck with a devalued, not pleasant-looking neighborhood.
Okay. Thank you. And I'm sorry, have you written to us or emailed us? I'm not familiar.
Well, I have written to the developer, or the...
Okay. Would you make sure that the city manager's office just has your contact information?
Yeah.
Okay. I would appreciate that. Thank you.
I just don't find that really helpful. But I will, I will do it.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Victor Parker.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm pleased to have the opportunity to be here. My name is Victor Parker. I live at 8911 Lake Washington Boulevard Northeast, Medina, but the Bellevue-Medina city line goes right through our property, so I'm a little bit in both. And my neighbor, Dr. Martin Hanson, is entirely in Bellevue. I'm here tonight with a much less dramatic appeal to you. We're asking you to help us continue the dialogue to deal with the failed storm drain line that goes through Dr. Hanson's property and is flooding both of our properties, properties badly. We have distributed a packet of background detail, which I couldn't possibly give you in three minutes, but I hope we'll explain the problem, and we'll do the best we can to give you an overview from 30,000 feet. My parents first bought the property that we're living in, in 1946. I've lived here most of my life since then, not all of it. Bellevue High School, class of 59. They sold the property and were divorced in 1963. I was out of state in college, out of state in graduate school, worked in New York for several years, came back in 1971. And in 1977, had a call out of the blue from the person living in the property who asked us if we would come and look at it. They were going to sell it, and he thought we might be interested again, which we were. So, I've been back on the property since 1977. During the time, my family's been involved with the property, there have been two major metro storm, sanitary sewer projects through the Hanson's property from the lake to Lake Washington Boulevard. The first was in the early 50s and built a pumping station, wow, I'm almost out of time, a pumping station...
I got three.
Did you? Okay. A pumping station at the water, and a gravity flow line down to that pumping station, the effluent was pushed down to Renton to be processed. In the middle 80s, they changed that system, came through and expanded the pump station by about 400%, build a force main line up Hanson's property to the road, and are pushing that effluent now back to, well, to a pump station at Medina School, and then back to West Point. During the course of those projects, they had to have cut this storm line twice. They ran heavy equipment up both sides of it, and since the second and largest of those projects in the middle 80s, we have had increasingly serious groundwater accumulation and flooding every winter. Culminating in 2016 by such a water accumulation in Hanson Yard that you couldn't walk the roughly 60 feet between the yards without going up to your ankles, and an open stream, I'm sorry, under, under the wall to our house at grade level.
So, we do, we do try to enforce as carefully as possible the three-minute rule, and, and you've met, but I think you have someone who's going to pick up the story from there, so...
Do you mind if I pick up your...
No, I would appreciate it very much.
Yeah.
This is Jerry Lutz, my attorney, who got involved at my request.
I'll speak for myself. I'm Jerry Lutz, Perkins Coie attorney for the Parker family. The, the issue that came up in 2016 was a failure of this drain system, and the city's utility department came by and offered to fix it, but when they came to do the work, they required that the Hanson's and the Parkers sign a release. And there has been a running debate ever since about who owns this line and who's responsible to maintain it. We had a series of negotiations through the, through the spring, and actually, beginning, I think in 2017, but again in the spring, where the city was going to do a replacement with an eight-inch line, and they wanted to continue for, for the Hanson's and the Parkers to own the line. We were going to have a, we tried to negotiate a deal where we would have basically a stand, a standstill as to who owned it and who didn't, but get it fixed. But we were advised, we're going to replace it with an eight-inch line. If you think it needs more, go get engineering. We got engineering done. The engineers at Pacific Engineering said it should be a 12-inch line. The city then said, we're stopping negotiations, and walked away. That was in August. They stopped. Since then, we have learned that in fact, on the city's own GIS mapping, the line, this is Exhibit Three, shows on your records, which is how you designed this thing, as a 12-inch line, and it also shows it is owned jointly but maintained by the city of Bellevue. So, your own records say the city should be out there fixing it. The second thing that's important is, because it seems to be a 12-inch line, the fact that it's actually an eight-inch line in places means it's undersized. So, the engineers that he hired are correct. It should be a 12-inch line. It should be replaced by the city, under the city's, I mean, under the city's utility plan. Now, this is a little bit of a cut and paste. This is the rest of the GIS we isolated, that one. So, you'll see it says, like, pieces that are owned by Bellevue, maintained by Bellevue. This Catch Basin down at the bottom says it's privately owned, maintained by Bellevue. None of this is consistent with the city saying, you own it? I'm walking away. And then, last but not least, from the force main project in the 80s, if you look at this drawing closely, you will see that the storm drain line, which comes from the street, across the force main, and out into Lake Washington, shows on here as a 12-inch line. So, we think part of what happened, or at least it's entirely possible, that the city thought it was a 12-inch line, because there's a 12-inch section that leads to Catch Basin, and there's a 12-inch section in Lake Washington...
Okay.
...that the designers assumed it was 12-inch.
Okay.
And, and it's misdesigned.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I would imagine that we'll be able to get something from utilities, a...
This is a matter of fact, we, the city attorney's office is working on it.
Is it? Okay. So, if we can be kept up to date on, on that, that would be good. Next speaker.
Final speaker tonight is Leonard McGee.
The engineers at Pacific Engineering said it should be a twelve-inch line. The city then said, "We're stopping negotiations," and walked away. That was in August. They stopped. Since then, we have learned that in fact, on the city's own GIS mapping, the line, this is exhibit three, shows on your records, which is how you design this thing, as a twelve-inch line, and it also shows it is owned jointly but maintained by the city of Bellevue. So your own records say the city should be out there fixing it. The second thing that's important is, because it seems to be a twelve-inch line, the fact that it's actually an eight-inch line in places means it's undersized. So the engineers that he hired are correct. It should be a twelve-inch line, it should be replaced by the city, under the city's own, I mean, under the city's utility plan. Now, this is a little bit of a cut and paste. This is the rest of the GIS we isolated, that one. So you'll see it says, like, pieces that are owned by Bellevue, maintained by Bellevue. This catch basin down at the bottom says it's privately owned, maintained by Bellevue. None of this is consistent with the city saying, "You own it, I'm walking away." And then, last but not least, from the force main project in the eighties, if you look at this drawing closely, you will see that the storm drain line, which comes from the street, across the force main, and out into Lake Washington, shows on here as a twelve-inch line. So we think part of what happened, or at least it's entirely possible, that the city thought it was a twelve-inch line, because there's a twelve-inch section that leads to catch basin, and there's a twelve-inch section in Lake Washington...
Okay.
...that the designers assumed it was twelve-inch.
Okay.
And, and it's misdesigned.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, I would imagine that we'll be able to get something from utilities, a, um...
This is a matter of fact, we, the city attorney's office is working on...
Is it? Okay. Uh, so if we can be kept up to date on, on that, that would be good. Um, next speaker.
Final speaker tonight is Leonard McGee.
Welcome.
Welcome. Thank you. Mayor, members of the city council, thank you for, uh, letting me speak for you tonight. Uh, Leonard McGee, live at eleven, one-fifty-first place, Marfease, Bellevue. Uh, as you know, uh, the neighborhood, the city's neighborhood enhancement program is in Lake Hills this year, and, uh, last April, I did submit an idea that is in the handout that's before you. Um, I learned that, in fact, it doesn't qualify for, uh, neighborhood enhancement program. There's a matching program. But in any event, um, the Del Brook addition neighborhood sign is to bring attention to a special and unique neighborhood in Lake Hills. Because of the design of the, of the neighbor, of the street back in the nineteen sixties, uh, the Del Brook addition is part of the overall Lake Hills master plan community back in the nineteen sixties. It's thirty-two homes, sixteen homes north of Main Street, sixteen homes south of, of Main Street. On the south, it leads to Lake Hills Greenbelt, on the north, leads to Bellwood Elementary School site. And it's unique, because no other, um, neighborhoods in that master plan community of Lake Hills has sidewalks on both sides of streets, parking on both sides of streets, and underground utilities. So it's very unique. The picture that I have showed there shows, um, the summer, families playing, having water balloon fighting the street. I bring this attention, to your attention today, because there's a development proposed at the end of the street that would change our neighborhood. It's following city requirements, but the neighborhood has supported a similar use for over fifty years, and we're really surprised that, while standards being standards, that when something works, we, we're amazed that standards would change something that is so functional, that has sustained the neighborhood and sustained the community for, for years, for over fifty years, and we figure it would do for the next fifty years. So, our idea was to bring attention to this, um, uh, this issue. It probably will become for the council, so I don't wanna speak to the actual permit at this time. But I do wanna bring your attention. We've spoken with both the project staff and both the city staff, um, and they've done their best. We, we're really still struggling to understand exactly why it is that it has to be this way. We would like to speak with city directors, uh, department heads, if possible, 'cause we think there's a reasonable, um, solution, and we have a proposal that we'd like to sh, to work with the, um, the staffs and, and the city to, to address our, our unique Del Brook neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. We now have your contact information. Staff has that?
Phone number, everything.
Okay. Perfect.
At the bottom.
Good. Is there, uh, so that was the last person signed up? Is that right? Last person signed up? Is there anybody else? We still have a little bit of time. Is there anybody else who wanted to speak to the council tonight? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to, uh, our next item. Um, we do not have, uh, any reports of community councils, boards, or commissions. Uh, we have done the report of the city manager. I did want to mention, and forgot to mention it, is that Deputy Mayor Robinson, um, is gone tonight with an excused absence. That brings us, we have no council business and new initiatives. Brings us to the consent calendar. Um, and I just wanted to highlight, there are a couple of things on here that I, I did wanna, uh, to note. Uh, one of them is, this has the, um, uh, the, uh, contract with Kids Quest on it, so that you're aware of that. There are, uh, some, uh, grants for Wilderton Hill Park, and I am sorry, there was something else we talked about this morning, Mr. City Manager, and I'm forgetting it right now. Um, maybe it was the, um...
Delay tax relief? Maybe?
Yeah. Uh, anyway, that, anyway, I would accept...
Item D. That is the Wilderton Park funding.
Yeah, that's the Wilderton Park funding through the RCO. So, um, with that, um, I would accept a motion to approve.
Second?
Moved and seconded to approve the consent calendar. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Uh, we do have one land use item, and, uh, this is a final action on the Sambika Activity Center rezone that was the subject of a hearing examiner, uh, report to us. Um, yeah, go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening, Mayor. Councilmembers, ordinance, uh, seven-four-seven-six, six-four-seven-six is the final action on the Sambika Activity Center rezone application. Um, just by way of background, this, um, was brought to you earlier this year, I believe it's on September third, where council considered this process three rezone, and at that time gave direction to the staff to bring this matter back for final action this evening. Um, joining us this evening to walk you through the process is Nick Malasinos, our deputy city attorney. Nick?
Good evening, everyone. Um, as, um, Brad Miyaki just stated, the next business of the item is the consideration of the rezone application submitted by Ryan Gilbert for the Sambika Activity Center. Uh, this is a process three quasi-judicial proceeding. The hearing examiner recommends approval and no appeal of the recommendation was filed. At the council's September third regular session meeting, the land use director presented a staff report on this rezone application. This matter is now before the council for a decision. It is a closed record proceeding, and the council's decision must be based on the record before the hearing examiner. The alternatives before the council are to approve the application as recommended by the hearing examiner, to approve the application with additional modifications or conditions, to remand the application to the hearing examiner for an additional hearing, limited to specific issues identified by the council, or to, to deny the application. For convenience of the council, in the event the council votes to approve the application as recommended by the hearing examiner, staff prepare to propose ordinance, which was included in your packets. In the event the council makes a different decision, staff will prepare an ordinance following council's direction to be presented at a later meeting. Because this is a quasi-judicial matter, Mayor Chilmanak, I recommend that you give council members an opportunity to disclose on the record any ex parte communications they may have had with the applicant or any other supporting or opposing the application. To most efficiently enable council members disclosures, staff have searched all emails received at council@bellevuewa.gov and individual council members' city email addresses. Therefore, council members need to only disclose any contacts received other than through city accounts. If any ex parte communications are disclosed, the council members should state on the record the name of the person who contacted you, the date or approximate date of the contact, the method of the communication, and the substance of the communication. Thank you, Mayor.
Anybody have any ex parte contacts? I'm seeing a lot of, uh, heads, um, shaking no, so I'm going to say that, uh, no council members have anything to report.
Thank you.
Is that the, conclude the staff report?
That does.
Okay. Uh, so, uh, we did have this come before us, um, I can't remember if it was last week or the week bef, I think it was the week before. Um, is there any discussion or any questions that people have for staff? If not, uh, Councilmember Stokes, would you make a motion on sixty-four-seventy-six?
Yes, I move, uh, the approval of the application and adopt the ordinance approving rezone application permit file number nineteen-dash-one-oh-six-seven-oh-four-dash-LG...
LQ.
Q, right. Uh, Sambika Activity Center rezone, rezone of a seven-point-six-two acre site in the Newcastle subarea, from Neighborhood Business District, NB, to multifamily residential, R-twenty, and single-family residential, R-five, to Camp Conference Center, CCC.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve ordinance, uh, six-four-seven-six, which does all of that. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries six to nothing with, uh, Councilmember Robinson excused. Uh, that concludes the agenda for tonight. Is there any other further business to come before the city council? If not, we're adjourned.